Call the meeting to order at seven thirty six P M. Hope if we can salute the flag.
The United States of America.
Alright, so we're gonna get started. I'm just hoping everybody stays safe this evening. Don't drive through the water, obviously. If you seems too deep, turn around and go go a different route. First, we have citizens to be heard. This is on agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience here that wants to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, any on Zoom? Okay, then we will move on to Township Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much. And it is quite a quite a storm out there. Just a couple items up for discussion on tonight's agenda. Several we've touched on in the past and several that are new. The first is following the storm. It feels like every meeting, we're talking about another storm, but the last wind event had knocked power out to a number of residents. I reached out to Pico to see what type of improvements could be made. There are some plans to improve tree removal that are impacting wires and some infrastructure upgrades. This would be stronger wires and connection points and updated telephone or electric poles along South Town and Calum Roads. Looking to coordinate with them for some other areas of the community to see if we can get scheduled some of those more detailed infrastructure improvements into the future. I know in after the past storm, there were a number of areas carved corporate was out for a significant period of time. And I just wanted to open the discussion to see if there are any other areas that you would recommend that we attempt to prioritize with Pico for these investment infrastructure funding.
So I know that my street loses power quite often, and I don't know if it's coming from King's Highway or but when when we lose power in Barley Sheaf, it runs all the way down and the golf course, like the home zone, the golf course and the apartments all lose power from there as well. So usually when my power goes out, the golf course area is out as well. So I don't know if it's I think it's coming off of King's Highway and coming down the road there.
Olive Street is another location that has a lot of problems when the power goes out. Starting at Seventeenth Street through about Eighteenth or Nineteenth Street. We have issues there also.
To be addressed with the the North and South Count improvements they're gonna do hopefully.
We hope so.
Jane, any thoughts?
Oh, well, they know we're a prime suspect. I mean, we go out four days. I mean, if the wind picks up tonight, we might go. And to be out, like you said, for four days consecutive days in a time like with the advancement of technology to be out that many days, it's just unrealistic. So many people suffer, you know?
If if you I'll be sure to raise these locations and working with Pico on the past, they will be able to identify those areas that are frequently. Sometimes there's a small community that's only a few homes that's out for an extended period of time and they keep track of that data in order to better best prioritize which areas to improve. But so I'll ask for that information and also attempt to prioritize these locations and speaking from past projects, when they do invest in this infrastructure, it does make a difference. It could be going in another location, how it was going out twice, if not three times a month. And once this infrastructure was in place, if it went out once a year, it's because of a significant event. So it's a it's a notable change when it's improved.
A lot of these areas have old growth trees and things like that. So you know, that that doesn't help and they're all on the wires. No, I know trees on my my house lean on the wires.
They shouldn't be doing.
No. But I'm not getting up there and trimming them. I'm waiting on Pico to do that. I did see a hand raised. Deborah, if you could just give your name and address for the record, please? You're muted still, Deborah.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry. I live on King. My name is Deborah McDonough. I live on King's Highway. Not only does the power go out way too often, but the April storm we had, I lost over twenty thousand dollars in refrigerators. The panel boxes, my mini split. Now my insurance was very good to me. They had an independent person come in and examine everything that was out of power and they identified it as a power surge, as too much electricity coming in. I've since had a new power panel put on the breaker box. And in this last storm about two or three weeks ago, my mini split went out again. My surge protector on my water softener went out and a few of my breakers were tripped. So it's not only the electricity going out, there's there's these surges that keep happening and ruining people's property.
Yeah.
And there's many of the neighbors who didn't have quite as much money involved in what was destroyed as I did. So they didn't put in an insurance claim. Oh, I also know that three of the neighbors in my immediate area are power, the meters that the electrical company reads. They 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 burned up. They blew out. That's how much electricity was coming through at that time. So I do believe there is a big infrastructure difficulty and problem. I mean, I can put a surge protector on, but it keeps blowing my surge protectors. So I'm very much in favor of checking what Pico can do for many of us in this area. Thank you.
Where are you at on King's Highway? So we can try to talk to.
Twenty seven, six, twenty six, seventeen East King's Highway.
We'll try to put that on the list.
I have my folder with my insurance company sent out an an independent company to review every single appliance or furnace or mini split. And I have that report that I will share from an independent company. So my insurance company knew what was damaged by the storm. So I will gladly share that with anybody.
Do you want her to send that to you, Don?
Yes, if you'd be willing to to provide that information to the township, be more than happy to raise that as an issue with with Pico that is concerned and certainly one we want to get in front of and help if we can.
So if you can email Don a copy of that, we can put that in front of Pico.
Okay, I'll I'll see that you get a copy somehow. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Deborah.
Any other hands raised? Okay.
I will keep the board and public up to date on those conversations and hopefully we can have some positive outcomes moving forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, next I have the topic we have discussed in the past with some new information. This is the the holiday lights in in the Thorndale area along Lincoln Highway. And I believe Abby has we've been following the last meeting, we were able to to reach out to the public and get some feedback.
Yes, we did. Where to go? So we put a little poll on Facebook and asked people to like one of these four designs. The snowflake was by far the popular vote, four hundred and six thumbs ups. The wreath got two seventy eight. You can see lots of comments. Well, maybe you can't. It's kind of small on these screens, but there were lots of comments as well. Fewer for the candy cane and I I threw a candle on there too, just to have four options. So yeah, I think you can see Tony commented on on this one as well. Oh, and he made sure everyone knew he didn't want the candy cane. So lots of good comments and people were, I think, happy to be asked. So that was a really good idea. We had what was it eighty eighty or so comments on the post in general, pros and cons. And I think the overwhelming feeling behind the snowflakes was that it could stay up for longer.
Yes.
So I think that's why that one was a winner.
There was some people that suggested a mix of the can the snowflakes and the wreaths, right?
A few people did, yes.
Confirm the the silhouette snowflake, not the diamond snowflake.
I'm not sure which snowflake this was. There are probably four different snowflakes that they had.
Yeah, the one There's one that
The silhouette is the one that I posted. I think people would be happy with any snowflake.
And maybe the candy cane to alternate because the snowflake can carry on from even before November through January, February, almost. The snowflake.
Yeah.
Depending on what the weather will be like.
I think we need to come to a conclusion on this in order to get these done by in time, correct?
We would like to be able to reach out for official ordering in order to get these received and installed in time for this season.
So my my opinion, and I'm just one one person, is that we go with what the public kind of directed us towards. So that would be my my opinion. To go with the snowflakes.
I'm I'm with that thousand percent. Do you think we should do four for the four foot or the five foot?
It I think it will depend, number one, on on cost, of course. Number two, on availability inventory they have.
Yeah, let me let me see what they have available in sizes and designs. Now that we've narrowed it down to snowflakes, I can I can put up a little thing with with
The diamond one.
Here's an eighty dollar difference.
Diamond snowflake, five to six feet.
Yeah, let me let me see what they have available and that's
Okay.
That's the consensus. We'll start on those those nitty gritty conversations and get these ordered and installed.
Do we need a motion?
At this point, let's let's wait until I believe we'll we'll double check with the company to make sure they have the proper amount of inventory for us. And we're gonna quote back.
How many? How many polls do we have again?
They said nineteen.
Hey, Jane, any any thoughts on that?
Oh, no, I was definitely, you know, in favor of letting our, you know, community, you know, speak their voice and they did. So I'm in agreement and I think that will serve us well because like everyone saying, we can go months and and keep that festive ambiance, you know, going, you know, really stir it up.
Good. Any other comments? Anything online or anybody in the room?
Nothing online.
Okay. Alright, so we I think we have a consensus. Next, we have Graft Beaver Creek Stream Gauge.
This is a fortunately for tonight's and tomorrow's expected weather, a time and topic of discussion. We were approached by the county. They were interested in installing a stream gauge on Beaver Creek around Lloyd Park. This gauge would be able to in real time or very close to real time, provide the watering level of of the creek and provide a degree of advanced warning in the event of potential flooding. The the gates itself would be accessible online. It could be shared with the public, could be shared on the website. And it's a component of a network that they're installing on a variety of of waterways throughout the county in order to get a better gauge of flooding conditions in in the moment. There would be a cost associated with the the gauge and that would be to the township. It would be split between the county, downtown borough and the township. We would be the county would pick up the lion's share of that, about fifty percent of the cost associated with the gauge. We would only be as of right now responsible for about two thousand and change in terms of costs. We don't have the exact figure just yet. But it'll be about two thousand annual in order to receive the disinformation, have access to this information. As at the moment, the gates itself would just be measuring the heights of the the waterway. But at at a point in the future, it could also be upgraded to include any sort of contaminant levels, things of that sorts for the water quality. But right now with the flooding issues in the area and throughout the county, this would be an effort to just get a better indication of real time conditions in each of the creeks, streams and rivers throughout Chester County.
I think it's an excellent.
And there's a federal quest chair in there, too. That's great. The US GS is gonna pick up seventy two hundred of it per year before the county down town. I I think it's it's a no brainer.
I know it's brilliant. I mean, just it's gonna save us more than that and, you know, repairs and losses and it get you like really notified and you can go ahead and diffuse some of these things that are happening. You can you can really get on top of things. I think it was a brilliant idea. I don't know who created or designed it, but I think it's a good good product to invest in.
If if the board is in favor, we'll move forward with the conversations and get some more specific details. It it should hopefully help provide some just more information. A little bit of advanced notification that we'd be able to share with the public.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Or anything? Mark?
No.
Jane, you good?
A question, Don, do you know if they're using these? I don't know what they call them, stream gauges anywhere now in the county? Or would this be the first time that the county would be employing something like this? So us just with flooding warnings?
It's it's understanding, yes, they do have some other gauges up on some of the other major waterways throughout the county. This would be included in that network and should be able to to demonstrate when water is starting to back up. So during significant weather events, it it will show really the 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 rise of the waterways as it approaches and and backs up further up Beaver Creek. So it would be a part of a larger network.
Okay, that's what I want to know, that they are already using these techniques. So it'd be just an another component to it in areas where there's still flooding issues in the counties. Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? We have one.
Okay.
I don't want. Okay.
Adam Thomas, three ten Carlin Court Commission.
And there you
You gotta get a little
Put it closer to your mouth.
Adam Thomas, three ten Carlin Court. Planning Commission and resident. You had said that the gauge is going in at Lloyd Park?
That's the plan. Yeah.
Okay.
That's what they would like to do, yes.
Is there any way we can plan in the near future to get one farther upstream so that we would have advanced warning for something coming in versus downstream?
I asked the exact same question during the meeting. They were targeting Lloyd because it should provide, as the water starts backing up, it specifically for Calum residents. If it'll go it'll back up from essentially the eastern part of the township and move up to the creek westward. So they from county township residents perspective, having it there would give the most advanced warning in terms of potential flooding upstream. Now, obviously, if the rain's coming together, if it's a flash flood coming in the other direction, that's not going to be the case. But for a lot of these storms, as in the southern part of the county, as water starts backing up this system, this will give advance notice that way. I think they were targeting Lloyd because it's public in that location and they would have accessible access with easy access in order to get to that location. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did ask the exact same. That was my first question, too.
So you can see on the map, these are the existing ones. And if you scroll over the little the little dots where the gauges are, it says gauge height feet, two point seven five feet and gives this time increasing at point three feet per hour. So that's the kind of data they're collecting.
What is the yellow? Does that mean that it's in flood?
I don't know. I can try to find out.
We can.
There was one existing water.
You can see there's some red ones down there.
That seems bad, right?
Yeah.
In minor flood stage forty two minutes ago.
So is it active? I'm picking up some flood levels?
It's real time. I love it.
Okay.
I bet that's the increase per hour.
Okay.
It's a guess. I'll find out.
Thank you, Abby.
Are there any other comments on Zoom? Okay. All right, we'll move on to VPP Rolling Mini Grant.
Okay, this is a an exciting program. It's through the county. As you know, the township is receiving support through the vision partnership program at county level for the zoning ordinance update. And we're moving forward very, very well with that program, and I think it's it's working out successfully. In addition to the larger BPP program, they're establishing these mini grants, which as as indicated in the agenda items, a rolling window just starting. So there is an open application period right now. It's for smaller, faster, more targeted projects, whereas the the zoning ordinance update we're doing currently is for the entire township. It's a longer process, eighteen months or so. This would be for quick targeted approaches. So it would be for a a park study and open space assessment. More more specific ordinance updates. So if we want to do a land development update on specific type of ordinance or specific zoning updates, it would be directed towards that. The max amount of funding available from the county is ten thousand dollars. There's a forty percent match at the local level. This would be just non-county funding. So it could be directed from state, local township or private funding sources. It just can't be county funding. So if we would apply for this application and receive the full ten thousand dollars, that would be four thousand dollars that we would have to contribute to a max project cost of fourteen thousand through the program. Really, we've been talking internally about different types of projects that this could go towards. I wanted to bring to the board's attention just for feedback and and better direction. I would like to submit an application as the first round, even if we're not not necessarily first round is a new program. And even if we are not successful in that application, I think getting it in and demonstrating support on the ground floor will will benefit the township long term for future applications. Really open open discussion at this point that there's a specific a type of project that I know we have a lot of projects ongoing right now, but a park improvement, an open space. Things of that sort is really what this is geared toward, just something we can accomplish relatively quickly and successfully with limited resources.
What about a park plan?
If it for the entire township would probably fall under, we were talking about that today as a matter of fact. And I think for the entire township, it wants the zoning vision partnership program is complete. Obviously, if we can go after additional funding from the county through this program, that might be a good for a whole township wide assessment. This would be for a specific park that would
Yeah, I was thinking the Speckman Farm Park Plan.
We we did talk about that as a potential. And that I believe, even though it's a big property, that should fall under the eligibility criteria for this program, yes.
How about the the trail segment closer to Lincoln Highway? There's something over there where we want to get the trail. It's on the other side by the railroad, isn't it?
That's the the county project he made that ends on Hazelwood. All right. Yes.
But improving connectivity from the township to it could be potentially a good project as well, yes.
Like connectivity.
What about any of the Beaver Creek Trail segments? Are they eligible?
I think they're too big.
Okay.
What about our sign projects, Abby? You know, we weren't going to do a senate talk throughout the township. We need replacements of a lot of our signs and
I think these are more for planning projects, but there are, we were also talking about some other small grants that are available that might be good for for updating signs and adding signage to different projects. So that's on the radar, but I think for different grants.
So when we did the park plan for Speckman Farm back in two thousand and seven, we I think got a BPP grant for that and we met our match of that was for we used Pico's Growing Greener Fund and they gave us, I think, thirty five hundred dollars towards the project. So could if we applied, can we still? You said we can use private funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
To do our match, right? I don't even know if they have the Growing Greener anymore, but okay.
We were talking talking about that program. We were going over all the potential grants for different types of projects today and trying to match match up, you know, for the upcoming, you know, from the budget standpoint.
Okay.
And that one that one stats a great good program, either the Pico, some of the foundations we are talking about is potential. They have many grant applications that we could go after. So definitely.
I don't know. Is Jane still on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, Jane, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I was just mentioning the signage, but like Abby said, that's for like a smaller project grant. So and I don't know, can we do anything? Do we need any help around the golf course? They're always making improvements.
They could. There's definitely from a feasibility standpoint, there's a there's quite a few projects over there that need qualifying.
That's a good idea.
Yep, I think they need help. Doing a great job. We think we can do to enhance it with just, you know, continue to keep the flow of visitors and attendees, people that are joining and playing and the revenue is great. So anything we can do to make improvements is just going to keep things going in a positive direction.
Rain, any thoughts?
No, I think it's a good idea if we put in for something for the golf course because there are a few necessary things that are on the table right now that could use help. That would be wonderful. I say go for it.
What what we could do, because it is a new program, they they seem really excited about rolling this out and they think it's gonna be very helpful. And of course, we always want to support our partners at the county. And if in turn they want to support by awarding us some funding, we're not gonna say no to that.
Right.
We could take some of these ideas and see if any, if they get really excited about any of the projects and report that. That might be that to pitch these different types of projects. It's a wide variety. So if they have a vision for what they'd like to fund, it might help direct our application to to be more successful.
They spelled out pretty clearly in here. Action or implementation plan identifying complete street characteristics for a community. And action on implementing plan for developing trails, sidewalks or public transportation facilities. Bicycle lanes, sidewalk uh bicycle lanes, sidewalks, trails. That's a can that we already, are already starting to open there. There's lots of, yeah, it's, it sounds great. Let's get what we can.
Their, their goal, I think it sounded during the initial conversations is uh, the VPP program is great, does take a long time.
Yeah.
And if uh, that, that time period is, is a, a challenge with everything else that municipalities have going on. So if they're able, now if there's projects that would be a quick win for both the county municipalities, that this is what they're trying to support with that.
Okay.
Um, so I'd be more than happy to take these wonderful projects back to the county and then see if any of them are, if they're more favorable and uh, report back.
Sounds good.
Yep.
That's very exciting, Don. Thank you.
If there's any other projects, please, if you think of them.
Yeah.
Thanks, Don.
Any other comments from the public here or on Zoom? Nothing? Okay. We'll move on to our favorite subject, the trash contract.
That time of year again. Yes, so uh, the current contract expires at the end of this year. Uh, and I know township staff, um, Director Gilz especially has been very active in uh, working to, to update the uh RSP for that contract. Um, but with the anticipation of putting it out to bid in early September. Uh, this is uh, open for discussion right now. And with the anticipation that we would put it on the August twenty ninth, the business agenda uh, for a request consideration to advertise the RFP. Um, there's a memo in your packet that, that put together the terms of the contract. That's the stance now. The exact language is being finalized uh, with our solicitor, uh, Ms. Camp. And uh, the, the, the largest takeaway is that the service levels uh were made the same or anticipated to remain the same. Um, the main change is the contract term. We did perceive guidance that it would be, we are authorized to have a three-year contract with two optional extensions. Um, in that uh, you know, if, if, in, in the RFP.
So I, I just had a question on number five B. And it's on page twenty-three of the packet. All single stream recycling materials are the property of the hauler and any revenues or disposal costs from those items are retained or paid by the hauler. But then down under number eight, it says ownership of the single stream recycling are determined based on the base bid the township select. So, and the commercial ones, are we?
Hmm.
Are we keeping the cost of that or is that something, um, that just wasn't clear to me?
It's an excellent question, uh, Mr. Young, and I will verify the exact ownership of the single string.
Okay.
And uh, before the next meeting, provide that information.
Thanks Scott's hopping in here.
Is it also says, hey Scott, how are you?
Hey Josh, how are you? Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, we give the option on number five. Um, some of the haulers elect to take the recyclables back to their facility, which is a shorter run for them. So what we do is we, we bid it with two ba, two different base bids. Base bid one is where the township, it's our current program. Uh, we get to pick the recycle facility. The hauler is mandated to go to that recycle facility and take the recyclables to them. Uh, base bid two actually gives the hauler the option to retain the recyclables, take them to their facility, uh, like up to York, uh, for Waste Connections Facility. Um, and then they collect the revenues off of them, hoping we would get a better price on that situation. Usually base bid one is after, the last several contract is usually the base bid that we end up awarding. Uh, but we always like to throw that option in there because the haulers do have labor costs, fuel costs and everything to run it up to Birdsboro is where we require them to go now. So sometimes it's cheaper for them and they would sometimes give us a better price. So we bid it out of two different base bids and any commissioners can pick which base bid is better for the township with, usually by, based on pricing.
Okay, so then that makes sense on the commercial. Be, it's, if we pick base bid one, then the commercial follows what, what we pick then.
Correct. Yeah. If you, if the commissioners pick base bid two, then the recyclables would be retained on the commercial side by the hauler also. There are, the commercial recyclables are picked up in toters and they're picked up as part of the normal rats route. So they go into the same truck.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, no, nothing else in the contract changed. Uh, most of the yard waste collection, Christmas tree complies with the state requirements for our recycling program. Uh, for um, for composting uh, uh, materials. Uh, the shipping program, of course, is separate from this contract, but uh, that will still maintain uh, the service. So um, we're kind of curious to see where it goes. Uh, some of the small haulers are out of the picture now. Uh, we're left with the three big haulers. So we're a little nervous on the pricing, but we won't know until end of September, early October.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott.
Any of the commissioners, Jane, Lorraine, Mark, have any questions?
No.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. One thing I wanted to ask, is the price of hauling going up again?
We don't know until, well, this is just the contract to put, this is to put out to bid to find out who would bid for what.
Thank you.
And the two optional ser, the, the two optional services, you'll see optional service one and two. Uh, we do offer that to the residents. Uh, that's just a uh, cost that's billed directly from the hauler. Uh, but we do get it priced out. So we can at least get a locked in price for the residents and then it's up to the resident to use that hauler or they can use somebody private for those two, which is a special pickup. If somebody has a major clean out of their house and they're exceeding our limits, uh, they can do the optional services and that's a direct bill from the hauler to the resident on those. And they can pick whoever they want, but we just give them that option if they, if they like to.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Okay. So that will be on our next agenda to put out to bid.
That is yes. It will be on the August twenty ninth agenda, business meeting at the end of the month.
Okay. Don, anything else?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to board minutes for approval of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions on the minutes? I know that a correction came out today. Was that for this set of minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I did not get through it yet.
The correction that came out, I believe, was on the cover sheet of the board packet.
Okay.
And it was a, a small typo that was corrected.
Okay. All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes?
So moved.
Your second. Second, uh, moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, none. Uh, motion approved four zero. Um, next, um, finance department, uh, check, we're on approval. Uh, and I don't have the check numbers on the uh, agenda running these, but let's see what we got. We got check number fifty-two thousand four hundred sixty-seven to check number fifty-two thousand five hundred forty-six. It's like any questions on?
Checks look good.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for check approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. Any further questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Wow.
All right. Motion approved four zero. Now we are on to our board liaisons. First up is uh, Jane with Parks and Rec.
Uh, Parks and Rec. We met on Monday evening. Um, and, and probably say that we, we do have a very fine group of uh, members and always looking for residents that are interested to come on board. We have like, this is probably our, one of the most busiest times of the year, moving into this final quarter of the year. It's going to be packed jam with a lot of activities, fun events for families and children and, and it's something everybody can take part in. So if you, if you want to come on board and give us a hand, just stop by the township, reach out to Abby and uh, she'll get you enlisted right away. Um, so we did discuss um the um, Lord's Movie Night and understand it was very well attended. And the uh, art in the park uh, activities are going well. And looking forward to seeing some of the nice projects on exhibit when we have our um, Community Day, which is going to be on September seventh. Uh, I think we're going to do it at the municipal park again. I think that's a great location and everyone seems to enjoy uh, the layout there at the park and with the parking and the events and the food trucks. It's well organized. So we're looking forward and working again to have um, our vendors. I think we're pretty much at capacity. Is that correct, Abby? As far as the, the vendors for Community Day.
Close. I can take a few more.
Okay.
Can always fit a few more.
Yep.
If you're out there, haven't uh, signed up yet, we still have a couple more slots available. I would uh, make sure that you get in touch with Abby as soon as possible because they're going to go quick. Uh, we did have to reschedule our national night out, which is going to be held this Monday evening. And the weather looks great. So we, once we get through tomorrow, you know, we look like we're going to be in the clearing here for the next week. So mark your calendars for national night out on Monday. Is that August twelve?
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Dirty.
Well, that should be fun. Uh, also, we did talk about the um it was on the tree lighting contest, the decorating contest. Like I said, getting ready for festive events for October through December. So again, we'll probably need a lot of hands on deck to get through these events. And looking forward to um bringing back our, our travel event in mid-December. You know, uh, I don't think we're ready to really advertise it yet, but watch for it to come out. Uh, for a day on your own trip, you know, back on the road again. That was exciting. Um, I think that was it. If I missed anything, Abby, uh, kind of jog my memory. And I think we do have a Sep, uh, is it a September fourteenth date for another cleanup day in the township?
Yes, we're doing Embryville Road. It's going to be a good one. Need more volunteers.
Yep, need more volunteers for our next cleanup day for September the fourteenth. I don't think I missed anything else.
Jane, I, I have a quick question. Um, I know we're gearing up for the holidays. Uh, that, has, has there been any discussion in there about how to draw businesses on Thorndale and Lincoln Highway into the idea of a contest of their own for holiday lights or?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, so a couple of years ago, we did open up the decorating contest to businesses, but we didn't do a very good job of promoting it. So um, I think with that is definitely on the radar. At our October meeting, we're going to hash out all the details for the rest of the year. Um, and that will be a priority, but we might need some feet on the ground to run around some of these businesses and uh, and get the word out.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Thank you both.
Thank you. That concludes my Park and Recs uh, report.
And you're off next for COG.
COG meeting was uh, generally just like a meeting to discuss, like a workshop type meeting. There were no new items on their agenda. We're just discussing about the trash initiatives. We were just see if it was feasible to uh, start their own trash line company or entity. But uh, Don probably could elaborate on it more because I don't even think they really voted on anything. It was just like each municipality that was represented given their ideas and thoughts of whether they thought this was a, a good approach. Um, doesn't really seem to me that it's really getting off the ground and they're just kind of going around the bush, trying to figure out, you know, how to beat prices, you know, how can we save municipalities? Can we do these things collectively? And I think that's the whole purpose of the COG is to try to network with all the municipalities to see how we can support one another, how we can bridge together to cut cost anywhere that we can. And maybe in some instances we can, but in some areas, this is a very sensitive gray area for us because again, you're talking about vehicles, you're talking about personnel. So a lot of things, you know, may not work in our favor to move at this moment with that project. Uh, that's my thoughts. And that's, that's all that was conducted that evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Um, without Paul, I don't think we have a municipal authority update. Um, Derek, Don, you don't have anything from?
The uh, the only thing I mentioned that was brought up regarding that is the improvement and the upgrades to the station are continuing to afford and remember partnership members are continuing to discuss uh timelines, population growth and capacity.
Okay. Fire board, I don't know without Paul. Historical commission, Mark.
Hey, yes, thank you. Um, historical commission keeps on rocking. We met, I believe, on July seventeenth, seemed like three years ago now. And uh, we meet next on uh, August twenty-first. Guess it's a week, a little under two weeks today. Uh, at our last meeting, we had all but one member there and a few guests. We dug into uh the how we felt about picnic. Some of, some of our learnings of what worked and what could have worked better and I think we were just all very relieved to have it behind us. And uh, you know, the, it's like anything, you, you, you do it once and then you know how to do it the next time. So there's a lot of excitement to do something more, a little bigger next year. But um, for now, we're really gearing in for the last uh few months of the year to focus on uh, focus our efforts on getting a real historical uh, milling district for the Edges Mill uh, area there. And talking about uh getting um, interpretive, how we can get interpretive sites going. A little low energy and I apologize. I don't know why, but uh, it's always fun. It's always fun with that group and can't wait to get in there for the next.
And Lincoln Highway, I was unfortunately unable to make last night. Mark or Don, do you want to give a update of?
Yeah, I mean, it was, I'm going to probably be about as low energy as the last one. We, we met, it was, it was, it's always great meeting with that group. Positive people with vision. And uh, we, we, we talked about the grants that are Don has put in for and how they could be best used for Lincoln Highway and how the domino effect of all of that. So uh, but we missed Josh. Without Josh, Josh is very important. So.
Yeah, unfortunately work kept me away from the meeting, but uh, I'll be back next month. Um, all right. Thank you. Um, uh, Lorraine, Ingleside Golf Course.
Ingleside. Hi, Lorraine Tindaro. Uh, we're talking about Ingleside Golf Reports. They report a robust June revenue of fifteen thousand dollars with three thousand one hundred sixty-two rounds played. Uh, they are currently interviewing several people for a golf pro. Likely hire is in September. We also need to hire people to work in the pro shop. So if you have any interest, come on down or contact Nicole Shannon. Planning events and fundraisers for twenty twenty-five. Um, SPCA donation initiated to stop animal cruelty. We generated a significant amount for the Chester County SPCA. We are still We are still collecting donations. If you want to donate, contact Nicole. At six one oh, three eight four, nine one two eight. We are also looking into roof repair for the pro shop and considering several quotes. That's it right now. Thanks again.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Thanks, Lorraine. I I'm I'm glad to hear they extended the um fundraising for uh.
Yeah, I I was glad to hear that too.
You know how long that's gonna go on?
They didn't say, but give give her a call and you can drop off the donation or however you want to check.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
Good.
All right, any questions on any of the summaries? Hearing none, we'll move on to any additional business.
If I may, Commissioners, the only update I want to add is um Director Stackhouse let me know. Uh, monitoring the situation with the storm and there's a number of streets closed. So for those attending, uh leaving for home after this meeting, or anyone that happens to be listening and interested in going out. Uh, Eleventh and Foundry is is closed right now. South Town and Olive and South Baling Hazelwood at the train station. Uh, police are out barricading and just if anyone is going to be on the roads this evening, be very careful.
And I I see, I saw this morning, the generators are already at the locations for the lights and the barricades were out this morning, I saw.
We decided after the last storm, where it did take a degree of time for Public Works to come into the township building, get the generators and put them out. Um, if anyone was on the road, so it was it was hazardous. So the generators were put out in advance of the storm. Chained and fueled up and ready to go. If we do lose power, they will just be able to turn the traffic lights on a lot faster.
Okay.
Very good.
Head out this way. Um, sorry, I couldn't make it down, but uh the underpass is flooded, the school road was chained off and. I I was just really uncomfortable coming back home. That was my main concern because the only way for me to get in. Is to travel over Coach Street, which takes me a a little ways out of the way in the evening time. I can't see. These roads, I mean, it's flooding everywhere. But, you know, going out and seeing that down the pass was already barricaded. They pulled a car out of there last week. It took like, I don't know how many police officers to get people out of their cars. It's just a bad situation up here. And I mean, we're we're going to be in this storm until tomorrow evening sometimes, and this is just the tip of it.
Yeah.
Fortunately.
Yes, it's just not worth it, so don't don't try to go under these underpasses.
Yeah, I know there's nothing we can do with a private road, but he owns it, but boy, it really ticks me off.
It is a bad.
Individual who owns that road, he in a potential emergency, life and death situation. Bar, you know, puts up a chain and doesn't have the, you know, compassion. Go out and undo that during the storm. I haven't gotten that fired up in a while, have I? But I'm serious, you know, like we got to all look out for each other here.
Not after eighty years. I mean, I could see it was just something recent, but uh, you know, after eighty years and, you know. All of a sudden, something happens, you know, beyond our control and we're penalized for it as 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 residents, um. Who always had access to that road. I mean, I'm here forty years plus and this has not happened.
Question for you, Don, to go back to the VPP grant. What about acquisition of us taking over that road?
That road.
We can certainly look into what options are available in order to improve safety conditions for residents of the township always.
Mm-hmm, because you can always condemn the the road and take it.
I think there's a a number of options available for municipalities and be more than happy and and speaking with Commissioner Kennedy earlier this evening. Uh, we will certainly look into what options would be best in order to improve those conditions because uh safety is number one, of course.
Yeah, because somebody would have to go all the way to Coach Street to rescue somebody on the Foundry Street. That literally.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and as uh Mr. Stackhouse said before, that that chain won't keep them from getting through to you if they need to. So we can always get through, but the problem is if we condemn, I I think if we take that land, we're still landing into a private driveway with the school district. Who could equally just as easily put up a chain and block access.
Yeah, they have, but even with that, you know, we can discuss it later.
Yeah. Let's um, let's put that on the front burner for some uh discussion, absolutely.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Any additional business, any more additional? Any public comment? Nothing online? Nothing here in the room? Anything else from the Commissioners?
No.
No.
Uh, Tony just raised his hand. Tony, if you could just give us name and address, please?
Still muted, Tony.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
I would like to attend to the meeting tonight, but I'm flooded in in Loomis Avenue.
Hmm.
I guess you know I've been coming there since nineteen ninety-five. Complained about the flooding. Now the tunnel's been there since the fifty, you know, forever. But it's more important for other things to be done than the things that are important. Don, I'm speaking to you directly because you are the manager. You have to take care of this.
Thank you, Tony.
Is Don there?
Yeah, he's he's responding now.
I I want him to make sure because it's been going on too long. I mean, that ain't like it's two years or five years or twenty years. It's, you know, it's been going on for hundreds of years. And uh Jane, he even said she couldn't get out of there. She knows it's flooded.
Completely understand. This is something I know the township is taking very seriously, the stormwater assessment. Um, it's just about complete. We had a a preview of the dashboard uh just this week. Uh, that will be available for public view very shortly. We're analyzing the. Uh, areas of the township that need the uh most significant improvement and we'll be building that out. Similar to the road plan, the capital plan, the best. Improve those uh the stormwater conditions throughout the entire township. It is obviously, as you mentioned, an ongoing problem for many years. It has uh, and it will take some time to get in front of a a whole fix, but it's something that I. I believe that the township has uh is it not, not just committed to, it's something that resources have already been directed towards. And uh it's a priority.
All right, thank you for your time. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or you?
Thanks.
All right, seeing none.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.